Cool. I can see some, some of the people from like, hiding back here. I know, because then you can't do your thing.
I can do it.
Maybe you can, maybe you can sit at the head of the table or something. Because that can.
Good evening, welcome to our city council special meeting for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call please.
Roll call, council member Roth.
Present.
Council member Mann.
Present.
Council member Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, council members, mayor, mayor Potem Barn attendance.
Next, if we can, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Thank you, if we can all remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have citizen comments at a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council. For any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Please note that under the California Government Code, section five four nine five four point three. Section A, special meeting agendas need only provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any item that has been described in the meeting agenda before or at the end of the consideration of the item. The public will have an opportunity to comment on matters, on matters not on the agenda at regular scheduled council meetings. So since at this time, since it's a special meeting, only citizen comments should be allowed or are allowed for the items on the agenda, which is our educational workshop, status on current and future water projects. Mario?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor, council, members of the staff. We'd like to bring back to the council an update on your water system, where projects are. And see how the city is moving forward with addressing some of the challenges that it has. I have with me one of our senior, seen, you can't hear me real.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah, we got a little closed. I think it is on, I'll just get a little closed.
Thank you.
I have with me, Nick Fontaine is one, one of our senior engineers, he's doing a lot of the water work in Livingston. And he's very familiar with, with all of these projects. So we'll, we'll start with our first slide here. And like I said, we'll have a water supply update and an airwimp project update. And then the, the TCP projects that are in the works, as well as new wells, which are incorporated with those projects, the TCP projects. And some of the water line replacements, the ones that were recently done and the ones still outstanding. And then we have a summary with project titles, they're color coded, it'll be the last, the last slide. And they actually are color coded to what you see here, this map behind us. And then we'll have questions, you can, if you have questions as we go along, we'll make it informal, just stop us. And we'll address things as we, as we move forward. On your water supply, you're basically in the same status that you were last year. You have the same capacity and you have the same production. Your firm production of eighty-nine hundred gallons per minute is what the city produces minus the biggest well. So you take the biggest well out and that's what you have there. There's still adequate capacity to meet your maximum daily demand. And capacity for future demand on proposed projects is adequate, except that, and this is the same as it was last year. To meet the peak hour demand, if, when, when the, or if the project that was entitled for the four hundred and eighty apartments here on the south side of the city is, was to be constructed and be online, be on now, you would not meet your peak hour demand. So what that really means is if your biggest well was out and all those apartments were built right now, that you would be right at the edge of your production. You have any questions on that so far?
On your bullet point, the fourth bullet point on the water supply, capacity for future demand, how much further into the future are you proposing?
That's the one I was mentioning, that you, if you were to build what's been entitled, which the last big entitlement was that four hundred and eighty unit development on the south side of the city, that's where you would be right at the edge. And it's not for daily demand, it's not like for using water, it's like worst, absolute worst case scenario, peak hour demand.
That would be, if I heard you correctly, that would be if, if, if one of our water wells went out.
That is with your biggest producing well out, that's how we do these calculations, it's a state requirement, so.
Like, yeah.
Right. If all your, right, if all your wells are working, you're fine, but if you take the biggest one out, you would be. That's well seventeen.
Yeah, and Mario, you said, this is to.
Mike.
This is to cover if whatever residential apartments we have proposed right now, that would cover that, correct?
Correct, that's, that's taken into account what you have entitled, which that's your latest big entitlement.
Yeah, the question, the second part of this is say that a project gets proposed. No, 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 no. Because I know there's some rumblings about like green zone and those kind of things. How does that, was that already factored in, or how does that factor in?
Yeah, that's, that will be factored in, is actually being conditioned now. And for something like that, which is at the edge, way on the north side of the city, they would have to generate their own water, which the requirement with the city is they would have to build a well to municipal standards. So it would be like a city well.
You said they would have to build a well, which we normally, we require projects to at least contribute, if not outright bill. Because we've had projects that had to do the wells, we've done that before. Now, I thought that you can't, would that become a private well, or once it's built, the city takes over?
The city would take over.
Oh, got it, got it, okay, thanks, I get it now, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it would become a municipal well.
So the developer would be responsible for that well?
Yes.
All the infrastructure to have that put there, and then the city?
The city would take over after it's done. Most likely would be supplying those folks and any develop.
Anthony, do you mind if you just keep the mic with you, maybe? That way you're.
Can you?
You could, or at least take it with you if you want. There you go.
You hear me now? Yeah, that question was if that well would be supplying only that, that development.
Yeah, at this point, that's, that's where, and we're still dealing with, with the applicant.
Yeah, we understand.
And they had proposed an ag well, which the city at this point does not allow. And that had been already proposed a few, a few years back, when this project came about, it was proposed to have an ag well up there. And as of now, the city doesn't allow ag wells within the city, city limits. So that was brought up at that point, yeah, I know you, if, if, if the applicant wanted to keep pursuing that, then it would, would have to, the, the city would have to change its municipal code to allow for things of that nature, regulated.
We gotta be careful what we do, because
Absolutely.
there's another company that would love to have their own wells, you know?
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to go there.
Right, right.
To which project are you referring?
That's the green zone.
Mario, if I could, what's the difference between a regular well and an ag well?
Right, a municipal well is held to what's called Title twenty-two standards, which is potable water. So what you have in cities is municipal wells, they have to meet Title twenty-two. And there's primary standards, secondary standards, all of that stuff. Ag well is basically drill a hole in the ground and pump water out, which is what most irrigation districts do. Big farmers do that, they look for quantity, don't care a whole lot about the quality. I mean, they, they still test their ag wells, because they don't want to have a lot of salt and things that's going to kill crops. But it's no way near the, as regulated as a municipal well. And also the physical components of the well are somewhat different, not quite as fancy. And consequently, not near as expensive.
Thank you.
Sure. The grab, can, we'll go to the water demand. The water demand from last year, which is the last bar on, on the right, yeah, that one there. So you can see it did decrease about ten percent from twenty-one, which had decreased about fifteen percent from twenty. If you look in the middle there, that's the drought, the mandatory water usage, water restrictions, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So a couple of years after that, it started going up and the, the city managed to bring it down. And it is, the trend is still a decreasing trend for consumption.
Yeah, what is the main contributor to decreasing demand, is that? No, I understand conservation, but which industries contribute the most, industrial or residential?
I, I don't have the breakdown of who did what. I know you have a huge industrial user, if they conserve water, it's immediately reflected on, on your consumptions. Because we all know who it is, they, they use two thirds of, of the city's water. So that's a huge component, the residential, it also helps if you don't waste water, you know, in the city. But that industrial user is a big factor on, on your usage.
Mario, so I think you just kind of created another question in my mind. Since, since we have one user using, you know, more or less two thirds of our water consumption, what can we, well, or I guess as we move along, probably it's, it's, I don't know if you have it, but what are some of the things that we as a city, because it's not residential, and it's, and we are very limited to what and how we can make recommendations to a business in regards to water saving?
Right. And, and if I may, they are mandated by the state also to conserve. And of course, the city has an agreement with, with this industry that limits, that has upper limits on consumption and those sorts of things. And how much it costs and all, that's all laid out in your agreement, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one time when we were mandated by the state to cut thirty-five percent, you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
We were listed in the papers as being the worst city for conservation. We had to actually fight with the state to say that our residents have decreased that, but our industrial use can't, because they have one agency telling them they have to use so much water per burn, other agent says you can, so there was a conflict. And state actually gave an exemption to foster farms. And once they did, we were able to meet our conservation thresholds. That's the reason I asked that question.
The city team actually had to go to Sacramento. And we went and met with the board, met with the EPA. And, you know, we laid out our case and the reason why it couldn't. You can't just say, oh, well, Livingston's terrible, because it's been using all this water. You have to take into account the circumstances. And that's what paid off, because then, I think it was sometime in twenty sixteen, the waiver, we did get a waiver for that.
Where does Emerald Textiles fall within that industrial and consumption?
It's significant, but a lot smaller, yeah. It's, I don't, do you have numbers for? Yeah. Right, there, the numbers exist, you know, but, but it's, it's a very small contributor to that.
They're pretty, they're pretty insignificant overall, you know?
Overall, when you look at the big picture, it's not a, it's not a very significant consumer. Can we move forward to the next one?
Okay.
So this, this one here has been in the books for a, for a little while. And it keeps going and stopping and going and stopping. And it's the airwimp project that the, the city was awarded a grant, but it came with a match. And that's about, I'm going to say about four years, four years ago. And the idea is to use MID water, irrigation water, non-potable water, so it would be that water that's not Title twenty-two, so a lot cheaper water. And get it off of MID canals at those two, the red dots there, there, which is Gallo Park on the left, and then Arcalian on the right. That would be some estimated savings in water, especially, depends a lot on the weather, if it's a wet year or a dry year. And the, the main challenge with this is the, the funding for that project was only a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars grant, with the required a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar match, so the match is over fifty percent of the, the project. The, the city had, in talking to the finance through the years, that hundred and eighty-seven had not been budgeted to, so it was hard to move forward if you didn't have everything in place for it. And now with the escalation of, of costs and construction costs, there's just no way that you can accomplish that scope of work with that, with that funding. So we, we probably will need to come back to the council just on that item. And I know the interim city manager and I talked for quite a while about this one. And so that we can lay out some options for the city. We actually approached airwimp or MID to go to the state and ask for options and re, re, scaling down, rescoping, whatever we can do to not give up the, the grant portion. See if we can decrease the match, which normally they don't like that. But those, those are being pursued now, I don't have an answer for that yet. But it's kind of in limbo, this one. Okay, Nick. So the, the, the big projects, the big water projects, and I'll just do a little, a little intro on the TCP issue. I, I think we all know the issues, but I know the Newark council members are not fully aware of some of the details on, on these projects. But the, the, the city initiated the TCP treatment in twenty thirteen. The first plant was, came online in twenty thirteen and treats well eight. And I think, Nick, maybe you can show where well eight is. And so it's up, up on the, yeah, it's, it's east, east of, east of foster farms there. So that's well eight, there's a TCP plant there that at this point just treats well eight. That was paid for with your, by your TCP fund from a settlement about, I think it was twenty eleven, something like that. And there was over ten million dollars, I think, thirteen million dollars. So that, that one was paid for by, by TCP fund. Moving forward, the city started pursuing a number of projects through the state, through the water board. And the funding for this, these projects is what we call DWSRF, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. The, the first of these projects took care of wells sixteen and fourteen. And we'll show you where that's at. Again, that's on the northeast, northeast corner of the city. Well sixteen already had a, already had a treatment plant for iron and manganese. So it's, it's that well that's actually enclosed in the block wall, you can hardly see anything in there. So what was done is a pipeline from well fourteen, that red line there, the raw water to well sixteen, and then well sixteen, at well sixteen, we constructed the TCP plant that treats sixteen and fourteen. So at this moment, you have three wells being treated for TCP, zero TCP coming out of those wells. And that's, so that's really the, it's the second step in your program for addressing TCP. And the first one done with DWSRF funds. At that time, the city did not qualify for grants through this program, because you were not disadvantaged, not considered financially disadvantaged. So what you have for this one is a four million dollar loan, it's a low interest. I think it's like 1.4%. It's really low interest. But it is a loan. It's a loan that you started paying here about two years ago. It was completed in 2021 and you are making payments on that one. So we'll go to the future ones now, Nick. If you want to go ahead, you can take over these. You're doing a lot of the design and the footwork on these wells.
Thanks, Mario. Good evening, everybody. So what we have listed here is the second TCP project, which is being called Arcalian Centralized Treatment. This is going to treat raw water from, let's see where we are. Down here is Arcalian Park. And it's going to treat raw water from wells 12, 17, and then also 13. The project is also going to include a 1 million gallon storage tank and booster pump station with this. And then one thing to point out, these next three, you know, these three projects that I'm running through, these are currently included in a single application for the DWSRF grants and is currently being reviewed. The third project that's listed is the well 8A Site Expanded Centralized Treatment, which will include expanding the current, okay. Which will include the expansion to the existing filter vessels at the well eight site and include treatment for well 8A, 19, and well 18. Oh, did I say it wrong?
Yeah, you said 19.
Okay. So it'll be well eight, nine, and 18. Well 8A that's listed on there right now is currently, or was recently awarded to Conco West. So that'll be constructed in the near future with that. Well 18 is listed on there and that is going, is included in the application as a new well as well. And then the fourth project that's listed on here is well 19, wellhead treatment. And well 19 is going to be constructed on the backside of Foster Farms' property and will include a raw water line, or no, excuse me, a treated water line to Foster Farms for distribution and then also to the city distribution system.
Yeah. Mario or Nick or whoever, on the 8A, was there any participation from Foster Farms on that?
No. Let me give you a little update on the fundings and negotiations and all of that. The short answer is no. That 8A was paid with TCP and I think ARPA. Because the estimate was like 2.8 million and it came at 3.6. That's the one that the council just awarded at the last meeting. So it's a combination of TCP fund and ARPA. And so there was no contribution from, or discussions from Foster Farms on that one. What we have discussed with Foster Farms is kind of a two-pronged thing, is how much Foster Farms and the city are going to agree on what they will contribute in terms of paying for facilities. At this point, it's more focused on 19. But there's no resolution. This is an ongoing negotiation. And the other factor in these negotiations is some right away that the city needs to acquire to have these facilities. One is expanding well eight. You still need more room to do the new well and do the tank and do the booster pump station. All that is in, all the legals, there's actually been an appraisal done by the city not long ago, maybe what, month and a half, maybe a couple of months ago. The other piece here that requires property from Foster Farms is well 18. Well 18 is an empty residential lot right behind the car wash, right there. Yeah. That piece, that's just a 60 by 100, a regular lot. And then the other component to this right away negotiation with Foster Farms is the site for 19 and then the easement for the line here until it gets to Campbell. Once it gets here, it's on city property. So those three pieces have been appraised by the city. I have not been involved in negotiations for right away. Our office's involvement was basically preparing the legals and the exhibits, the pretty pictures and the legal descriptions of these lots. There have been some negotiations. I don't know what the outcome of those have been.
So you mentioned that there has been some negotiations.
Some meetings that I would assume would be negotiating with Foster Farms. Everything that we, our office has been involved with is more on the technical aspect of this. So you're going to need this, you're going to need that, you're going to need this. It's going to be a gazillion dollars. And the city and Foster Farms need to come together and negotiate that. That has been initiated, but it's, I would say it's in its early stages.
And who has, who is the appointed city representative in those negotiations?
As far as, there is no city manager. Past city managers.
Okay.
Not the current interim. No, no, I'm not, I want to make that very clear, yeah.
Well, okay. So that's good to know. So at least so that we can have a...
And Foster Farms has been very straightforward with, they want to contribute and this. And of course, they want to, I'm sure minimize the amount of money they contribute, but that's where the negotiation part comes in. The city has something they need, which is water. And the city has, and they have some the city needs, which is some properties.
Okay.
And I forget, do you remember how much of those properties were appraised when the city did the appraisals? I want to say it's like 300,000 or 400,000. And we're talking, we'll get to the money. This is all millions and millions and millions. Yeah. So. So do you want to, we'll keep going on. This is basically a summer, or the three ongoing big projects. And it was initiated in 18. The scopes have changed significantly. There was, yeah, let's do this, let's do that, no, let's do something else. So it's, it has been revised substantially. And now it is all incorporated into one big project. It can be phased, but as of now, it's incorporated in one big project. It's going to be one big application that is in the works. The good news on these is the city has, since the first one that's been constructed has not qualified for grants. It is considered, or it was considered disadvantaged. I think your status just changed again to not disadvantaged. But the state has indicated that they will honor your status when the application was first submitted. So which means that you get 75% grant, 25% low interest loan, which is a huge, huge deal. Yeah. It's very, and when we get to the numbers, you'll see, yeah, it's a lot of money. So the revised scope was submitted in 21. And we're shooting for some completions in 2025. That might be ambitious. These things take forever to get through all the agencies and so. Those are subject to change. But anyway, you good with that one? So we can move on to the next slide. You want to?
Sure. Can't quite see that far. So here's a general layout for Arcalian Park, the centralized treatment. The raw water from well 13 will be coming down this way. And then the raw water from 12 and 17 will follow along the canal and cross onto the site. Here is the outline of the 1 million gallon storage tank. It is going to be partially buried for aesthetic purposes out there. Through here is the layout for the GAC filter vessels for the TCP treatment. Right now it's set up for, here's the existing with the potential for two potential trains added to it.
All this is future, obviously, but that's the further future one is to allow for increasing the capacity of that plant if there's other wells that are, be in the proximity of this plant. Right now, you actually have a well there, it's number 10. It's been abandoned for a long time, but used to have a well there. And it seems like your wells are kind of more bunched up in certain areas. But, and the reason for that is people chase the better water quality. So, and that just takes a little corner of the park. You can show the whole park here. Takes the westerly corner of that park. Do you have any questions on that one?
And then here's the preliminary layout for the well eight centralized treatment. The existing well building, well eight, is right here. And the existing filter vessels are right here. And then with this project, we're anticipating to add two trains or potentially four trains based on the anticipated flow once well nine and then with the additional well 18 is constructed and also treated at the site. Once everything goes through these vessels, it'll go to the proposed 1 million. Man, it's hard to hold it steady.
Mario or Nick, help me understand, where's the canal at?
What is that?
The canal, where is that at?
On the previous one?
No, on this one, where's the canal, which is closer to the canal?
This is the well eight here?
Well, that's well eight, never mind.
Yeah, there's a pond, there's a pond here.
Oh, I'm one state, okay, never mind.
Now, you thinking about our family?
Yeah.
That was the other slide.
Yeah, that's why I said it.
Don't you live over there?
I do live over there. No. I was trying to, you changed that and I was still...
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just kind of laughing at him going...
Yeah, you can now...
Confuse me, you know, like a cat, you know?
It's here.
Trying to keep up with it, you know?
Answer your question, it's on this side, along the road there.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. Kind of hard to see a little bit there.
So the darker area is the right away that needs to be negotiated with Foster Farms. In the past, the city acquired this lighter gray area here from Foster Farms for the original well eight treatment in 2013. And if you drive by there, this is that driveway, the half moon driveway that you have over there. Any questions on that one? We can come back to them. Right at the end, you probably will have some more.
One thing to add on to this is for the new well 8A, the location is going to be...
About here.
Yeah, right in that area, maybe down a little bit. But that's where the new well 8A will be. And it's still, for the time being, it'll tie into the existing treatment that's out there.
What we have to do with that one is basically trading wells because well eight is pretty old. Well 8A will be, should be a bigger producer and of course, brand new well. Where's 19? Oh, it doesn't have a picture yet because it's earlier design, yeah. So the other one is, and we don't have a layout for it yet. It's very preliminary and we didn't include it in there. But it's here, it's a little piece of land from Foster Farms and then they'll have these. This one was the latest component to this overall big project and required amending or increasing the environmental clearance for this, these things, which takes forever. And why don't you go through the process of what an application takes? Go ahead, Tony.
Mario, just real quick, was well 19 the replacement for well 11?
Originally it was, but now we're leaving 11 in and using it as a spare tire.
Okay, so it'll stay active still?
It'll stay active.
And 19, are we looking at treatment?
Yes, wellhead treatment.
At that site, wellhead treatment for TCP?
Wellhead treatment for TCP and whatever else comes about. But we did, there is a test well for that already done. And the only issue was TCP.
What about 11?
11 is going to just remain.
Remain as is?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
To talk about the applications real quick through, for these SRF grants and specific to this project, with the scope revision that was recently completed to add in the additional wells and treatment, it also, so the first step with that was completing the environmental and doing the SEQA amendments. And that's all been completed already. That was reviewed and approved by the state water board in last year, around November timeframe. And that was a major component to get approved by them. And so there's three remaining packages that we have to update as part of this application. And those components are, they call them the general package, technical package, and financial package. And then so, and like I mentioned, the environmental package has already been completed. So those three remaining ones are the ones being updated now to incorporate the additional scope in project areas.
Yeah. And the state will likely be okay with phasing, even though it's one big grant loan project. You probably, you may want to phase these because it's a huge endeavor. I mean, you'll see the, not only the amount of construction that you'll have, but also costs. And you probably want to do them probably sequentially, but not concurrently. Yeah, well, yeah, let me give you a little bit on, you'll have three new wells. I'll start from the bottom since that's the one that was awarded a couple of weeks ago, a week ago. So that one will replace well eight. It is in the yellow area up here. So once well 8A is developed, so it's online, the existing one will be abandoned, be destroyed. And then 19 is the one, the purple one here. It will have its own treatment on site. We considered doing a raw water line all the way over here. That wasn't cost effective. So we decided to do a wellhead treatment for that one. And you see this line here goes straight into Foster Farms also. So they'll be able to get some water directly from that to. Well 18 is the one that will be on the residential lot and that will have raw water going to the well eight. And that will have raw water going to the well eight site. That has not, there has not been a test well done for well 18. I'm gonna say about two and a half years ago, the city and Foster Farms agreed on certain things that included, well, let's let Foster Farms do these test wells, cause they can just hire a driller and go over there and do a test well, as long as it's to the specs that the city requires. And that was done for the first one, which happened to be 19. Since then, Foster Farms still has a well driller retained to do the test well on 18, but it has not been done. And I think part of, I don't know if it was a little hesitation from Foster Farms, was to make sure that the city would be buying that lot and becoming a city well and all of that. So it has not been done. It's been about, how long was eight, since 19 was a couple of years, huh? Two years, easy, huh? Yeah, it was probably pre-COVID. So well 19 is in design, well 18 is not in design, cause we don't even have a test well. I'll be glad to answer it. I know this is kinda convoluted, but it, that's.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a question, it was more about just taking notes on things that we need to follow up on.
Oh yeah, there's a lot. And I, I know I briefed the interim city manager a little bit, but it's so much information, I don't want to just bombard him with stuff. But there's a lot, a lot of, yeah, a lot of history. Think we're good. Those are the easy ones now. Water lines. And there's been some, some phases that, there's some were done a long time ago, like in 12 and I think before 2010. But the, the most recent one was phase three done in 2019. That was 100% grant through CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. And that's the, the one up on top. That was phase three. There's another phase here, phase four, that has been scoped, but has not been designed. And at one point about, I'm, I'm gonna say about three years ago, we did get a go ahead to start design, but then the money wasn't there, the funding wasn't there, so it was stopped, it still stopped. This would be a good candidate for another SRF grant, if that's what the city wants. They take a long time, but it would be a good candidate for that. I don't believe we would be really good, a good candidate for CDBG, cause CDBG works off of the areas that, that, gosh, disadvantage, yeah, disadvantage, financially disadvantaged areas by criteria that the state puts and the Feds put together. So I'm, I'm not sure if this one would qualify for CDBG grant. Those are way faster. If you can get a CDBG grant within two years, you're, you're good, you're done, constructed. But that, that's on hold, yeah. I did update the estimate. I know last year when I brought this to, to you, to the council, I think it was like a million and change. So now, now it's, it's doubled, yeah.
So what other alternatives could we consider? Because the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna get.
No doubt, no doubt. I, I know this will be in the CIP that should have been prepared a long time ago, but we're now preparing, which is a really good, really good thing. We're actually gonna be working a little bit this week on what's needed and the wish list and then prioritizing thing. This is, this one is not as important as the water, the TCP ones. Your issue here is you lose some water with some leaks and breaks, and so it's, it's not critical. And, and there's, and there's no regulatory agencies on your back here wanting you to do this. The TCP, you have a timeline to meet the requirements of the state. Livingston actually is ahead the, the, most cities, cause you started really early and you kinda have the ball rolling. So you're doing better than most. But it, it's a very lengthy process and the state understands that. I think we're, we're supposed to be in compliance by 2024 or something like that. And it's, it doesn't happen. And the, and the state is okay, as long as, as long as the agencies are moving forward and, and getting these projects in the ground, the, the state agencies leave you alone.
So Mayor, I wanted to add a couple of things, and Mario's absolutely right. Yesterday, Anthony, our public works director, Mario and I sat down to talk about planning for the CIP. And so typically, an agency will have a plan on what it, to do with its infrastructure. And with the city having its own water utility, it's really important that we have a plan as to how we're gonna tackle some of these projects. And so there's a few different ways to do it. One of the preliminary things we've talked about from a staff level is having something that we can bring to the council that's a one-year plan at least to get the ball moving. And then move on to maybe a three-year plan and then eventually get to a five-year plan, which is typical in, in most jurisdictions. As Mario alluded to, once we bring forward, you know, that plan that's going to be worked on by Anthony and Mario, there will be a funding mechanism that will attach to that, that will have, whether it's water utility funding, that'll be used to fund some of that, whether it's grants or whether it's other funding streams that we will allocate and ask for the council to ultimately bless as to what the plan is and what those funding mechanisms will be. There will be projects that won't be funded. And so at that point, it'll be the job of the team here, the collective team, to identify what those other funding opportunities might be, whether that be grants or other funding streams, so that we can start attacking and addressing those projects that have been identified by the council as those top priority items embedded within the city CIP.
Very good, thank you. I think we can go to the, if you don't have any questions anymore on this one. This is just replacement of pipes, hydrants, valves, that's basically what this is. We can move on to the, the big picture here. And this is the one that's color coded to this big map and the map now that you have. And so you, you have the one that's been completed, that was a loan for $4 million. So that one is completed. And then these, these are the ones, your, your future ones. You, we'll start with this TCP to the Arkalian. You'll see that there's a, a number here that says original. And that's what that project was estimated at originally, four years ago, I think it was. And at that time, it was all loans. So you would have ended up with an eight and a half million dollar loan just for that, for that project. Once the status was favorably changed, then the city now qualifies for grants. The cost did go up a lot, you know, it, it from eight million, 14 million. However, because you're getting a grant loan combo here, your loan portion dropped from eight and a half to three and a half million. So that's the good news, so. In terms of completions, we have all these at 24, 25. And these may, the 25s may be a little wishful, but we move forward as fast as we can with these. The 24 for well eight replacement, it's probably, it's realistic in the sense that this was awarded and we actually will have a pre-construction conference here next week, I think. And so what's going to take a little longer than normal on, on these is delivery of materials. It's taking forever to get anything. A well normally took, we, we estimated nine months. As a matter of fact, the contract, time on those contract documents is, the standard is nine months to do a well. Now it's taken 15, 18 months, yeah, cause you can't get pumps. The, the electrical portion of these projects went up drastically. We estimated for this one, we estimated electrical at a million dollars, right? Came in at $2 million. The rest of it, we estimated right on the money, but then the electrical was way off. And then you have all these control, controls take forever to get, and I mean, all this stuff is just, yeah. Hopefully it'll come, come down some. I, I did get some good news from one of the big pump suppliers. And this is for different types of pumps, but it's for like little pump stations. And they were taking 14 months about six months ago. Now they're estimating those to be at about 11 months, so not, not as bad. At least it's going the right way now. So we'll see if these, these are, this is big stuff, it's the big pieces of equipment, yeah. So similarly, the, the other ones, the TC, the one we call TCP three, which is this expanding well number eight, was three and a half originally, now it's 10 million. But you're still a little bit better off with the loan, the loan portion. And, and you, you see how this almost tripled? And that's because the scope also changed, there's different things that got thrown in there. Well eight A is city funded, and that's the one that I mentioned was TCP funds and ARPA. Now, well 18 is supposed to be city funded, but it's also an SRF application. So there's a lot of fluidity here with these things. So we figure if we're going to do this huge project, might as well put it in there. If the city is to, able to deal with Foster Farms and reach an accord and do something before the SRF gets to it, then it's fine. You can, you can easily drop things off of SRF, it's very hard to add things on to SRF. Yes, Tony?
Mario, just a quick question on the, are we currently considered a, the city Livingston, a DAC community?
That, I don't think so. But, but, but the, that was something we saw, what, a month ago or so?
Yeah, so they, yeah, they go off of the, the census for a lot of the applications. And then if, and during certain years, it's based on projections and estimates. So right now with the application that's submitted for all these projects, the city is considered a disadvantaged community. And whether that's the case moving forward or not, I need to verify that and see. Sometimes they look at specific project areas and who's gonna be influenced, but looking at the community, the estimate projections, I would like to verify them before I get them in.
Yeah, the only reason I ask you, cause are, where are we at with the TCP project number three for well eight? If we were to move forward, we're safe as far as them, the state accepting our application as a DAC application?
Yes, they actually, and when Nick saw that Livingston may not be a disadvantaged community now.
That, that was my question, is everything proposed here, had even submitted under that or not?
Correct, correct. And Nick verified with the state and they, they acknowledged that, that we're going by when it was originally submitted, which the city was a disadvantaged community.
And everything there has been submitted.
Everything there's been submitted.
So we, okay.
We're just going through the process. All, all the, all the environmental is done, all of that is environmentally clear. Design is maybe, I don't know, halfway there, maybe, give or take. But the initial part of the, or a component of the technical package, which, which is, it's a study, it's a preliminary engineer report that's done. But the financial, we still need some things from, from the city, which won't be a big deal. And so it's moving forward, but these, these do not go fast. You got a lot of free money now.
So Mario, with some of this equipment, like for instance, as we wait for some of this process to complete, when you order some of the equipment, pumps and the panels and stuff like that, is that something, is that a process where you need to pay for it upfront or put it in a deposit or?
There's, that's a really good question, cause the city nor, or some cities normally use a hybrid process for that. For instance, when you have treatment vessels, which is the case here, the city can actually purchase those and furnish it to the contractor that will get ordered to do the project, and you know, put them in place, do everything else. So that is a common thing that's done. It shortens the lead time to get those vessels and it saves you a little bit of money in the markup, cause the contractor, when they order this stuff, then they throw another 10% in there, something like that. So it does save you a little money, or this kind of money, it's a lot of money, you see, and, and some time.
Yeah, cause.
That was done for one of the.
Yes, for 14 and 16, the vessels were.
Yeah, the city did that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Cause, cause I'm thinking of two things. One, the savings, the potential, well, the savings in a way where we don't have to wait a year and a half from now, which is gonna be more expensive. And making sure that we have that our wait time to get new equipment starts now versus a year from today. Cause otherwise, a year and a half from, a year from now is gonna make it two and a half years wait. Versus if we start it now, it's gonna be a year and a half from now.
Yeah, it reduces the wait.
So, but.
They have to be, what, these have, they have to be fully designed, approved by the state. And then whatever equipment gets approved by the state can be ordered, we're not there yet. But that's where you're going to save that six months, a year.
Yeah, okay. So, so we have to wait until the design is approved by the state before we can even?
Correct, yeah. You don't want to jump the gun, so to speak, yeah. Like with, with that, the one on top, that's 16 and 14. As soon as we had the final design and it was approved, the city ordered the vessels. And at that time, lead times were not near as bad as they are now. But it's, this is all specialty stuff, proprietary equipment, proprietary media. I mean, everything is very sophisticated and, yeah, closely guarded secrets. All this media stuff is, yeah. It's, these are not simple projects, they're pretty sophisticated projects.
Yeah, another question, oh, actually two questions, Mr. Mayor, of course. One of them, I can't remember the wall number, you said that it will have a well head treatment?
19.
19, okay, yeah. The question I got in there is, when you said well head treatment, just what are we treating for? Cause it could be, do we know what we're gonna have to treat for? Or are we kinda planning for a worst case scenario under?
This, yeah, that's a real, yeah, that's a really good question. As a, that one has a test well done, so we know.
What, what it's gonna be?
Yeah, what we're going to encounter. And the, the issue is TCP, TCP, I think you have it everywhere. But some of these wells are really high on arsenic, manganese, that one was not. That test well was not.
Yeah, another question I got in learning from experience, I think, I'm not sure what the wall number is over by Kishi. Anthony?
Yeah, that's 16.
16, right? I remember originally we put a treatment in there and then we, and then we had to change the media types, because are we more standardized in what we're doing or we're not specialized in? Cause I know that was put in by the developer and they put something.
Correct, yeah, now it was changed to something that. Yeah, now it was changed to something that it's preferable.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
So we're making sure that everything is.
We're making sure that all of these.
Readily available and not specialized.
Right, they're all very specialized, but they're readily available, yeah.
Not proprietary like that one one, okay, thanks.
Yeah, exactly. And this here should actually not say raw water line, should say wellheaded, wellhead treatment. But the, the cost, you see, the cost on this 19 with the wellhead treatment is $9 million.
Well, yeah, the well's about 2.8 and the rest is going to be treatment.
All that treatment, all those controls. And then it has a couple of fairly long lines.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor.
So I think that's basically our, can you think of anything else, Nick? Tony, do you have any?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple of people in the audience. I don't know if they have any, okay.
Yes, at this time, so I'm going to bring, bring out for citizen comments, are there any questions or comments on the phone in regards to this item? Any questions or comments in the chamber regarding this item? Any donations?
Any donation?
I guess not.
Yeah, I will contribute $109 every month for now.
Okay, all right. Doesn't hurt to ask. All right, bringing that back to the dais. Council, any additional questions?
So what's the next step here? How do we move forward on this now?
I recommend that the city sit down with Foster Farms ASAP and look at reaching a consensus in terms of what they will contribute. I mean, it's going to be a, you know, you're going to reach a, some, you know, the land is this much, we're going to give you this much, so.
Yeah, yeah. One thing I think our interim city manager learned today was that the process of working out things out there was already started, but I'm not sure he was not aware of it.
Yeah.
So I think Anthony and interim city manager and, I don't know if you guys think the electors would help or we're just going to get in the way, you know? But whatever, I think there's five people and I'm sure everybody's willing to help out in any way, you know? So who I have the most experience. I mean, that's fine, you know? I mean, I don't mind enough, that's what it takes.
Right. And Foster Farms, as you know, went through some changes recently.
They did.
Some of the faces also changed. There's one that's been there for a long time and still there. And that's pretty much the go-to person at this time.
Yeah, one thing about being out there for so long, I've learned so much. You know, so I can probably keep up, maybe not with you guys, but.
Right.
Not as much explanation needed maybe, you know? But whatever it takes, you know, I'm sure, whatever resources you can call from the electors, I'm sure we're all willing to help.
And they've been very cooperative, but you have to reach an agreement, you know? And I have, we have not been involved in negotiations or, yeah.
Yeah, where I think the electors will be helpful, whoever it is, you know, is if they can understand and maybe realize that if we have the political buy-in, it makes the things easier. You know, it's not staff having to convince anybody.
No doubt.
You know, that does sway a lot, you know? So I think that'll be helpful.
So yes. Anything else, any questions, comments? So, you know, so just keep, or just make sure there's, you guys can continue this.
Big thing is communication and then, yeah.
So.
Having a solid team.
Continue this conversation and then we can get an update to the entire council on what the status is. And then so we can kind of figure out how to go from there.
Yes. I'm sure Foster Farms, just a couple tidbits on, because I know that's going to be a big, Foster Farms is going to be a big thing. Because it's a big part, they're big partners. I do not believe they appraise their properties. Normally, when you negotiate something like that, if I'm going to buy something from you, I appraise it, you appraise it, and then we come together. I don't know that that has been done from their end.
Unfortunately, you know, I don't think many of us here are familiar with the new management. We were familiar with the old management then. But it's also a good opportunity to meet and start things new and say, you know, we're Livingston, you're Foster Farms, and we are joining at the hip in a way, you know? So I think if.
Yeah. And from the technical, I know Nick and I have been at meetings on all this, the technicals, why do you need this? What does it, they need, what does the city need? You're going to accomplish everything that everybody needs. So we have met with some of the newer folks from there and, you know, it's fine, it's just new faces, you know? But it would be great to be able to capitalize on the connections the city has with folks that have been there for a long time. It'd be a great liaison, a good way to transfer to the new team over there.
Did you say earlier the appraisal was done by Foster Farms? So you're about $300,000?
By the, by the city.
By the city.
The city did, and we had been, we, as in our office, had been, I guess, reminding the city that, yeah, you need to do this. And it did finally get done a few months ago, a couple of months ago. But it was the city. Some, sometimes the people like more than one appraisal from one side. But that has not been discussed. All that city did so far is one set of, one set of appraisals on the three pieces.
Yeah, I can imagine them not even going along because they're going to gain the most by better water quality and better pressure. They got a lot to gain from it as well.
A lot, yes.
Right now, I know they're filtering at the, at the point. They're also doing extra filtration, I believe.
They do.
Yeah, they're going to see substantial savings.
Yes.
Once the systems are put in, you know, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I know their water has to be filtered. I think it's down to 30 microns or something. It's like talcum powder.
Oh, yeah, I've seen their systems.
Right. So if they're able to get good, potable water without hiccups of sand and things of that nature, that'd help them a lot too. And they know that.
Oh, they know that.
And they know it's, there's a value to that.
You know, and, and the amount of money for a company like that is, doesn't even show up on their petty cash probably, you know? So it's not, I mean, it's.
It's in the cracks of the sofa.
You know, compared to a city's annual budget and their annual budget, you know, there's no comparison, you know?
Did you have a question, sir?
Yeah, he answered another one. If the value was for one piece of buffer, if he answered.
Yeah, okay, all right. Is that it? Anything else?
I think that's it.
Other than just getting to work?
Getting back to work.
All right. Is there comments, additional comments before we close? Go ahead.
So just a quick recap then. So this just pertains to the wells that are by Foster Farms, right? Not, is that, is that what you got?
No, it's, the whole thing is just, it's city-wide, not just Foster Farms. But this area here is obviously of high interest to Foster Farms. But doing a whole bunch of stuff here too, that's basically just city.
But are you referring to that?
I was talking about the wells, because I couldn't see that map from sitting down.
Oh, yeah.
But I can see now, so there's the wells in question are the two by Foster Farms, and it looks like there's one by Arkalian.
Yeah, there's, this is what we call well eight, and now it's going to be eight A.
Mm-hmm.
This is 18, which I think it's behind your place there.
Yeah.
And then nine is existing. And then 19 is by the railroad on the west side of Foster Farm.
Okay, very good.
I can see this sitting down.
Yeah.
Makes sense now.
Okay.
Any additional comments, questions on the phone? All right, bringing this back to the dais again. Anything else? We're good? So I know you do, but it's okay, it's helpful. So, Mr. Grappol, so just make sure next time you bring your checkbook.
Mr. Mayor, every month. Every month, first, first weekend of the month.
Okay.
I make sure that I contribute same as everybody else here.
All right.
I do contribute.
Okay, sounds good. All right, if there are no more questions or comments, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 6:48.